Talk about a metal with no bedside.
I'm not even gonna tell whoever.
It's a little bit of your own white.
My phone's so bad.
You do look quite like you too.
I'm just stupid.
Thank you. Six thirty, Mayor.
At six thirty Monday, December the eleventh, let the Grantville City Council work session meeting come to order. Please rise for the indication.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. In thy name, all will be done, whatever is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our daily bread. As we give our daily bread, we give our daily blessings. We use none of temptation, and we worship the Lord as king and the power and glory forever. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the law of the United States of America. To the freedom and the right of each man, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant's comments regarding the agenda, Mr. Charles Phelps.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Y'all know who's ready. So I'm here to give support for the juvenile nighttime curfew. It was an awesome idea. I've read the ordinance through. I'll publicly say that our restaurant does not support babysitting or taking children. It was an awesome idea. We're going to run responsibility for the parents. So, also, while I'm standing up there, I want to give my full support to Joseph Phil Ford Pose. I hope the council will follow through with that also. I believe it's a good recommendation. Seems like a good guy, good person to fill that spot with y'all. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. All right, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Schreiber.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
If you'll pull your mic if I may.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, tonight we have on the agenda, the first item is a public hearing. That will not be held tonight. That will be held on next week when we have our city council meeting. It'll be on rezoning property at 192, 194, and 216 Roger Arnold Road. Further identified as parcel numbers GO five zero zero eight zero one five, GO zero five zero zero eight zero one six, and GO five zero zero eight zero one six A located on Roger Arnold Road from single-family residential R 20 to general commercial G C. This was approved by the planning commission. The next public hearing we will have next week on the eighteenth of December when we have our city council meeting is to rezone a parcel ID number GO zero eight two two four seven zero one five located on Clarice McCamery Road from RD Rural Development to G C General Commercial. This parcel was also considered by the planning commission and they recommended approval. So, next week, we will have the ordinances. If there's any discussion on the second reading of ordinance number twenty-three twenty-one to rezone the parcels that I just mentioned on Roger Arnold Road. And we will have also, if there is any discussion, on the second reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-two to rezone the parcel located on Clarice McCamery Road which I just described.
All right, do we have any discussion this evening on those two? Anybody?
I have a, I have a comment on the first one, on the Roger Arnold Road.
Well, sir, you needed to really do that at the beginning of the session?
Yeah, I did not know that.
Well, we're gonna have a public meeting next week.
Okay.
Could you just show up Monday and do it then?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
The next item on your agenda is discussion on the second reading of ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-three establishing a nighttime juvenile curfew.
Discussion. Any other discussion?
Okay. The next item on your agenda is discussion on the table resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-six establishing a city council policy for honoring and memorializing distinguished public service council members. This was tabled on November the twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. I would point out that before you have any discussion, there has to be a motion, a second, and a majority vote to take the resolution off the table.
All right, do we have a motion?
No.
Can't, can't take that action tonight. You can't vote in this meeting. It's a work session.
So, we can't take it off the table, right?
Not at this meeting. That would have to happen at your regular meeting next Monday.
But we can't say anything about it either.
Well, you can, I mean, it's on your agenda. You can have discussion about it.
Okay, okay, well, that's, I think, the code, right.
Could we get, Mr. Mayor, could we get further clarification from this city attorney about why you can't vote when you have a meeting and you've got a quorum? Why can't you vote?
This is not advertised as a, as a meeting where action is taken. This is a work session and no, no action can be taken in a work session. This is not a regular meeting or called meeting of the city council.
And that's based on what, what code?
That is based on...
That you can't vote at a meeting where you have a, a quorum of the council?
That is based on section two dash twenty-three. I don't have the, I don't have the updated version of that in my code book here, but it's two dash twenty-three which sets out that the second meeting, the meeting on the second Monday of the month is a work session and the meeting on the fourth Monday, or here you're having a call meeting on the third Monday, is designated as a regular city council meeting during which ordinances and resolutions may be passed and all other business of the mayor and council may be carried out. So that can only happen in a regular city council meeting or called council meeting. That's section two dash two-three.
Okay, that's your legal opinion, Mr. City Attorney? Okay.
But we can talk about this tonight because that's what we're supposed to do.
That's the purpose of work session, is to discuss items for action at your regular meetings.
So, Dave, this is the one that you had that proposal on about, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, yeah, this is gonna take some time to get right. I mean, this, I'm still working on that.
Right, but I mean, he had all the criteria that we, he gave us the copy in this area at, at your admin meeting to go look at. I mean, it had a lot of good criteria in it, so that's what you got going on in that one.
Yes, I mean, you know, otherwise I can have that for our raise at the beginning where...
Right. But it is important.
Yes.
That one he gave us that he borrowed from another church.
See, my savanna, yeah.
Yeah.
Just gotta make sure everybody follows the same guidelines if we're going to nominate or appoint anybody to be like, like a moral act.
So I have a question. There's not in here, it reads, "Upon the passing of any Grantville council member to include those not yet formally acknowledged by the city council, their memorial nameplate should be pre-listing name, title, starting date, day of service, et cetera." Is the plan, are we gonna end up going back and memorializing a hundred dead people?
No.
No.
But the intent is right there in us.
Well, that's why he's working on a different one that we borrowed from somewhere else.
Okay, so the language needs to state something like going forward, not going in the rear.
Correct.
Well, that's, that's your opinion. When I proposed this resolution, if was to have a way of listing all council members in the terms that they served and to have a wall where you could put these names up in the terms that they served, so it is to recreate our history which has been overlooked. That was my intent when I brought, brought this to, to the council. Now, the criteria, when you ask for criteria, I didn't quite understand that because the criteria for recognizing someone that's been elected to office and served or appointed to the city council to recognize that they have made a contribution to the community. I didn't understand what you meant by criteria, other than if they did something disgraceful or they didn't follow the charter or they didn't abide by the laws. Then I could say how that would maybe, you know, take their name off, but you, you can't erase history. They were elected, they served, and that was my intent. Now, I don't know what's going on right now, what is being proposed by, by the fellow council members, but that was my intent, Mr. Mayor.
So let me ask you a question. That's a lot of work. Who's gonna do all that work to research all those people?
A lot of work?
That's a ton.
It's in the record. It's in the record. The city clerk has the record. She knows from the day the city was, uh...
Okay, but you still have to go back and determine who they were, if they were distinguished. I mean, there's probably some bad apples in there. So, I mean, you, I mean, to identify that the clerk's office will do this, I mean, I'm just telling you right now, there's no manpower to do that.
Well, I, I quite, I quite, I disagree, Mr. Mayor. I think this is not an overwhelming project. I think it is something that can be done. It's a matter of record and to, to, it might take a little effort, it might take a little bit of time, but it's not something that's so overwhelming that we, we could not do it. But that was my, that was my intent, to, to try to, to bring forth a way that we can recognize the persons that have served on this city council from the beginning with just their name and their date of service. So that, that, that was my intent. So, of course, we have to have a majority vote on that, but that was my intent.
Okay, so my only, my only take again is, that is a lot of work because you have to go through record after record after record after record, and right now the city clerk's office has no time to do anything beyond what they're currently doing.
Well, this could probably be a project, a project for the, the HPC. They deal with the records.
Well, then you will need to identify that the HPC is in charge of, of doing the research.
I don't, I need to look at the, at the ordinance, but I'm not sure that's an authorized power of the HPC.
Well, it's not. I can tell you right up front, it's not.
What would not be an authorized power of the HPC? I didn't understand that, Mr. City Attorney.
Well, the ordinance sets out the powers of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm not sure that type of work is within those powers. It may be. I just point out that there are set specific powers that, that, that commission has, and I don't know that that is included in there.
Well, it's not, it's not a power. It's not a power. It would be a project. It could be even something that possibly a high school student could help. It could be a project for a young person.
Okay, well, all, all...
That's all I'm saying.
I'm just gonna say that, you know, before it's even considered, you know, who's gonna be doing it. I mean, that's a lot of work, you know, who's gonna be in charge of it before we can even pass anything like this. That's the way I see it. I mean, you got your volunteers for it, you know, we need to know who's gonna be doing it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, could we, could we confer with the HPC to say this is something that they would, a project that they would like to work on?
Well, unfortunately, the HPC doesn't have a quorum anymore. Three of them have resigned. So there isn't an HPC right now.
Three of them have resigned?
Yes.
I was not aware of that, Mr. Mayor, that vacancies on the HPC.
We have three vacancies on the HPC.
Has that, vacancies been advertised by the city clerk's office?
We haven't even begun, that happened in the last two weeks. We haven't even begun to address it.
Well, that's important information for us to have up here.
For the current members.
I believe there's only two left. There's Erica Stone and Robert, who's the other?
Courtney.
Courtney Long.
Erica and Courtney remain. And three have resigned. Do we have any idea what generated those resignations?
Confidential to them only. They just resigned, didn't tell us why.
Was that by, was it a letter submitted? I didn't see anything in my inbox.
It was an email to the city clerk.
I didn't, well, I, I repeat, I was unaware. Well...
So regardless of whether we had the HPC or not, I agree with Councilman Clark here, that we need to identify, again, this is, this is not a small project. We need to identify where it would land, the costs involved with that, the time, you know, and, and, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, you should have done before you could say.
Right. Because again, if there was something, we're just gonna recognize a few going forward, that's fine, but if we're gonna go back to perpetuity and put plaques up for a hundred people...
Two hundred years.
That's a lot of people.
Two hundred years, what a history, huh?
Yeah, and we don't even know how many of them are truly distinguished.
Well, this, this item, it has been tabled. I guess it would stay tabled. I guess Mr. City Attorney's tabled, right? So it would just stay tabled?
It would stay tabled unless and until, as the city manager says, there's a vote to...
Bring it back.
Vote.
Bring it back.
Vote for it.
That's true.
Indefinitely, yeah.
Until we vote to untable it.
Okay, all right. Schreiber, next?
The next item for your consideration is discussion on resolution number twenty-two-three twenty-seven establishing a city council policy for recognizing appointed volunteers in service to the city of Grantville. The resolution, as the city attorney prepared it, is in your packet for your consideration. It has all the criteria that was discussed and sets out the procedure for your consideration.
All right, discussion.
I just saw this copy of the resolution that was re, I'm not, I don't quite understand what was redone. It's basically the same one that I submitted in my agenda item.
The city attorney said the criteria needed to be included within the resolution, not as an attachment or an exhibit.
That's done all the time. I don't understand that, Mr. City Attorney. You, you had, it could not be an attachment. We have resolutions adopted all the time that, that has an attachment. Handbooks, that's an attachment. I mean, why, why, I don't, could you please clear that for me?
If it can be included in the resolution, and these things easily can be, I just think that's a better way to do it than ensures that everything's together, there's no less danger of something getting separated, attachments getting separated, everything's right there within the resolution, and I think anytime you can do that, that's the better way to do it.
Okay, I have one question for the mayor pro tem. At the meeting, you had offered to, to put together an exhibit. Have you had a chance to look at this resolution to, to make sure that was what you would have presented?
I, I emailed them also, and then you emailed too, so I'm making sure.
They put it together from your, your notes and my notes?
Yes.
Okay.
So I have one question, and it's item number four here. Certificates be presented to volunteers who served less than a full term. So, why? I mean, they might have served a week.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we can't be giving up.
I'm okay with those who have served a term. That's fine, but if they haven't served a full term, then they should wait till they should do.
We keep the giveouts until we get the people who quit on us. That's just the way I see it.
I can understand quitting, but sometimes there's, there's reasons. It could be due to health issues. It could be legitimate reasons other than just not wanting to, to be bothered anymore, so...
Well, I think if it was a health reason, well, okay, so it's qualified here. Let's say they served two terms and ended it because of a health reason. Well, they have served two terms, but I think any volunteer who didn't even serve a full term, whether it's health or not, I mean, you, you can't make an exception for one without making an exception for all. That's the only other question.
So we're saying the term is two years, right?
Right, so you gotta serve two years to even be recognized. If you hadn't served two years, I would say, wait till next year.
So your suggestion is to strike number four?
Just eliminate number four.
Okay.
And then if they've served their full two years...
They can come in for next Christmas.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay.
I'll make that provision.
Schreiber, next?
Next item for your consideration is discussion on resolution twenty-two-three dash thirty establishing twenty, twenty... That's a mistimed part of me. Establishing municipal court fines and fee schedule. The resolution is in typing, and when it comes out, this proposed municipal court fines will be Exhibit A.
Discussion.
Is there any significant changes from last year, Mr. Schreiber?
Yes. The municipal court judge has updated fines and fee schedules. I don't know exactly which ones she has, but the municipal court judge is the author of this.
And it's, it's been more than a year since they've been updated, so...
And I know she did a lot of work on it because she's talked to me quite frequently and really dug in for months.
What's the, uh, load through traffic? Is that like going through downtown, or is that something different?
That's it. There's a through, uh, well, I'm assuming that's the through trucks ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see that raised up to like Nunnan, after, but to...
Like when the truck probably gets stuck on a railroad track?
Yeah, I was just like in downtown, doing some like landscaping work, and three went over the train tracks, and within an hour, I was down there like downtown. And it's at seven fifty now, but Nunnan is already at a thousand dollars for the first offense. Your second offense is fifteen hundred.
I think that's what the add-ons with the courts are. I'm talking about with Nunnan stuff. I'm not sure if all of ours has the add-ons to them. I'm not sure if that's been put on them yet.
No, these don't have the add-ons.
I think that's just the base pay right there, but, but you have a lot of add-ons to the, it's like, you know, when we get, when we write tickets, we don't get all the money from the tickets. The state gets some, hospitals get some, VAs get some, public defenders get some, so our tickets, when you might get a ticket that says for five hundred dollars, we might get three hundred dollars out of it, maybe. That's the city's portion out there. Everything else goes out to the state. Paralyzed citizens get some money. I mean, there's so many add-ons to these tickets, it's just unreal.
Yeah.
That's the reason a lot of people's looking at tickets and say, I just can't believe this ticket is as high. Really, truly, the ticket's not that high as all the add-ons, and the add-ons go anywhere from five to fifty percent.
I know she did comparables on it, and dangers, you gotta be careful not to, I know we want to penalize, but you gotta be very careful because if you suddenly go way up and it's not, and someone, attorney's out there and says, well, this isn't comparable, then you get in a bad situation.
I'm like, Mr. Mitchell, I'm not really sure how long it's been since the fines have been raised.
Yeah.
I would say almost as long as I've been here.
It's been a while.
Yeah, I mean, I have to go back and think, I mean, I...
And like I said, the base, the bases are kind of, you know, we all got together what we did. We went to these other cities and compared, you know, the size of our cities with these other fines and stuff. We didn't bring ours down, up, because our fines were way low in a lot of cities. I mean, Hogansville cities was almost twice as much as ours.
Yeah.
And we didn't go twice as high as Hogansville, but we're, we're moderate now. We're, we're pretty close to everything.
Okay, other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this, this proposed increase of court fees, this is coming with a recommendation of the municipal judge.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay, well, it would be good, like when we have policies like this, or fees and things that are coming to us, that there should be something in the packet where the department head has signed up on it and made a recommendation for accrue or, or whatever, so it...
I don't understand what you mean, department name.
The department that this is coming from, Mr. Municipal Judge?
Yes, Lisa Reeves, yes.
Okay, well, do, all I'm saying is that when we get something in our packet that's coming to us for us to accrue, like I mentioned this before when we were dealing with the building, building fees for permits, and the, the department that was submitting that policy, those staff members are not here for us to ask questions to or to get feedback from, so to have, have something, a recommendation where they're, they're signing off on this. Now, we just have this in our packet. It's just, you know, a twelve-page document. There's no cover sheet. There's nothing to say that this is coming from the department, is all I'm saying.
This is what she provided to us.
Okay. I'm talking about the documentation that goes, this is a, this becomes a permanent record. This is attached, it goes with the minutes, it's a permanent, permanent record. The only thing we have is this document. Nothing submitted by, nothing recommended by, it's just this document. So that's all I'm saying is that what helps. If we had like a cover sheet, like when, I want to put something on the agenda.
So you just want a cover sheet that says...
I want a cover sheet.
This is coming...
Fiscal impact, blah, blah, blah. We have jumped through hoops, but staff can put something up and they don't have to...
So all you're asking was a cover sheet, this is, this is the recommendation from Judge Lisa Reeves.
And I'm just suggesting that we do it with other, you know, with departments, when things come in our packet for us to look at, we want a recommendation from the person who's, has the expertise in that field, you know, a cover sheet.
Okay.
Like, you know, like when...
But we could ask her to put a letter on top.
But can, do you understand what I'm saying?
No, I understand what you're saying, and we could ask her, I...
Not just her, but any department that's putting something on the agenda. If it's not coming directly from the city manager, it's coming from a department head to the city manager, there needs to be something in there to, where they're giving their, putting their, their certificate or whatever, their training online, saying, I, I present this, I recommend this, highly recommend this, or I recommend it with, you know, as you as you see fit, but something from the department that submitting things to us, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, anything else on these?
I'm done for now.
Okay. Next.
The next item for your consideration is discussion to consider procedure to post all meeting notices, legal notices, and city announcements in three public buildings in the city, be it the Grantville Municipal Complex, 123 La Graine Street, Grantville Post Office, 88 La Graine Street, Grantville Branch Library, 100 Park Drive.
Okay, so I'll ask the same question. Who's gonna post these?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, before we get to that, we have to consider that two of the three buildings are not owned by us.
That's true.
So we will have to get permission from the building owner to, well, let me rephrase that. Two of the three buildings have bulletin boards. If that's suffices, tacking up a notice, that may be appropriate. However, from the additional sheet on the agenda item, talks about an indoor aluminum frame wall mount enclosed court bulletin board with locking door. Now, if we have to procure those and install those, there lies the challenge. The librarian and the postmaster of the, of the Grantville branch don't own those buildings.
Yeah, we have to, the federal government and the post office and from the county government and library. Right?
That's true.
We need, we need approval, Mr. Mayor. But is this the way to get, put our notices out there in more places where citizens be able to see them? For more visibility and, um...
I mean, so even if we get all that approved, still the point is, who's gonna ride out there and do this every two weeks of the year?
Well, what tasks do you wanna forego?
I mean, that's one kind of thing, I mean, if we're gonna have someone do it, we know who's gonna be doing it and who's gonna be responsible for it.
Well, the city court's office is responsible for posting notices.
But these two guys really fall under that responsibility, he's a brand new. And again, we keep going back to, this doesn't really fall under their job description, and I, I will simply come and state this. It's the year 2024, everybody's got the internet, everybody. And if you, they choose to look things up, it's right there online. Why are we printing stuff up, costing taxpayer money, printing stuff? I mean, I've driven by post office often, there might be one card.
Well, citizens go to the library, they go to the post office on a regular basis. Now, many of them have never set foot at City Hall. We have a bulletin board outside the, outside the front door, but they never, they hardly ever...
But again, I'll state, it's the year twen... We're, we're almost at the year 2024. Everything is online. All of our information is online. And there's not a single person in Grantville who doesn't have to utilize a computer to do something. You can't survive today without, or sell a smartphone. So this, this adds additional work onto whoever has to go do it. We have to go print, we have to go take down the old ones. You know, and I, and I think the return on it is, is minimal at best for the cost, in my opinion.
Well, we have, another option would be to, to post them at our, the buildings that we do own, not just the City Hall, at the recreation, at, at the Park Complex or at the Griffin Complex. We have other buildings that are utilized.
Again, it's the same question.
Yeah, there's not that much traffic, and that's why my recommendation was for places where there is traffic.
If you want to ride there, every third of them, put them up. You know, just tack them to the bulletin boards.
What do you mean, if I want to? Are you talking to me personally?
Yeah, I mean...
This is, this would be something that staff would be doing. I'm, I'm not...
I mean...
I don't feel like that's something, if I'm gonna, when I'm making a recommendation, I'm told that, okay, you can go ahead and do it, and then it's, it's like an assignment for me. I'm just bringing this as a suggestion, then we, we discuss it, and that's...
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Scherer.
The next thing on our agenda is a discussion on appointment to fill the unexpired term of Allen Vacaser, who occupied council post number four. And as we said before, at the work session, we would let the candidates come forward and state for five minutes or less, why they should be appointed to the vacancy. So if it is okay, if that's the criteria that the mayor and council would like to follow, I would invite the three candidates to come forward. When their name is called, we will call them, um, in reverse alphabetical order. And the first candidate would be Richard Marsh June. Is he in the audience? He is here. So we will give Mr. Marsh five minutes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've lived here now in Grantville for three years, and I'm very vested in this city. I, I volunteer for the animal shelter. I do anything I can for the City Hall in general. I lo, I love this city. And my goal is to make the city more of a community, more, more of a, you know, everybody knows everybody, we help everybody. There's a lot of things that, that need to get done, I just wanna be a voice. And, uh, that, that's really what sums it up for me. I wanna make a difference. Uh, right now, I, I should have said, I reside at 84 Mary Livingston. I'm, I'm vested in my neighborhood as well, and everybody knows me. I don't know much more to say about that, but I think that I would fit the council quite well, being that I, that I already give a lot of my time to the city. Thank you for hearing me out.
Mr. Marsh?
Yes?
Um, I noticed your, uh, your application is dated October the thirtieth. So you were the, but Councilman Vacaser resigned on October the twenty-third.
Yes.
So you were...
I had gotten word that he had, and I jumped on it pretty quickly.
Pretty quickly. Okay, I was just, I was just wondering, because we had not even discussed how we were gonna go about filling it. So you were raring to go, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The next candidate, Mark Bynum.
Uh, good afternoon, council. Uh, my name is Mark Bynum, I reside at fourteen B College Street, that's here in Grantville, Georgia. Uh, I've been in Grantville, Georgia for the last ten years. I've managed to build a few businesses here, uh, that supports the economical growth of where Grantville, uh, is going. I think I'm here just for a voice and to, uh, for forward thinking. There's a lot of things I think that we can do, uh, and that we can implement differently if we have a different spectrum and, and the way that we do things. Not saying that we need to reinvent the wheel, but there are a few changes that we can make here in Grantville and with right people, with right heads together, I think we can make an instrumental change. I'm not here to say, hey, vote for me, I'm the best candidate, but I've always been hired from experience. Um, I ran three of the largest companies in the world. I built nine landmarks in four different states, and, um, I think my resume, it, it basically speaks for itself. I mean, I run a big box, small box, and, um, I'm still running it now. Uh, we're looking for expansion in other cities, other, other towns, and we're doing that. And I think that we can do the same thing here in Grantville, if we put our heads together, uh, and do what, what best fits the citizens, so. Uh, with your recommendation, I know that I will come here and I will work diligently for the city. I work adamantly with our, uh, police department, along with our recreation department, along with anybody who else that needs a hand from me. Anybody knows that I have an open door policy, you can come to me about pretty much anything. And whether we like it or not, we're gonna sit down and discuss it and see what best fits, uh, that idea. So this is what I have for the city. Um, if you wanna move forward, uh, I would love the recommendation and you can kind of go forward, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Bynum, uh, could you let, um, give us the permission about things you've done to, uh, within the city? I know you have businesses and you've, uh, you're a business owner, but as far as things you might have done for the whole community, reaching out?
Well, I do, anytime there's anything, anybody that knows me knows that I'm adamant with reverence. We have a election center that we are pushing here in Grantville, it's also incorporated through my barber college. Um, I am a partner with Pathways, um, also. Uh, I partner with, uh, Grantville City Library, anything they need me to do. Also, like I said, with our police department here, anything that pushes this city forward and that's better for the people, that's all I basically care about, is the people. We, we got people that's been here, and we've gotta have a voice and a genuine concern for these people. You know, if we're gonna do it, and we're gonna do it right, the people, they gotta be, that's gotta be the first, the first concern. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And our third candidate is Joseph Raina. I may have mispronounced his last name.
Good evening, uh, it's Brian, just like the, the first name, Brian. Uh, my name is Joseph Brian, I live at twenty Canterbury Drive. Uh, I'm a maintenance manager at a distribution center up in Newton. I have lived here in Grantville since 2010, and I believe that we are truly at a crossroads. I think we have made great strides recently, um, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. As the city grows, the, the decisions that this body makes will necessarily impact more and more people, and therefore needs to be thought out, discussed, planned, and implemented with the utmost care. That first and very important decision is a replacement of Councilman Vacaser. I'm not up here to give political stump speech and make promises I can't, uh, I can't keep or complain about things that have happened either recently or in, uh, past city councils. I'm here to give you the facts about me and my opinions, so that you can make a truly informed decision. So let's begin. There are essentially two factions in Grantville, and there have been since I, I moved here, and probably even longer. Everybody knows it, it's not a secret, but I am not a part of either of them. I never have been, and I never will be. I believe factions are counterproductive and limiting. I will make my votes based on the facts provided and what I truly believe is the right course of action. I will also provide those facts in a written statement, so that the citizens know exactly why I voted the way I did. I believe very strongly in process discipline. These processes help the citizenry know more easily what their elected officials are doing and how to find accurate information about the ha, uh, the happenings of the council. They also help the council perform its duties in a more effective, accurate, and efficient manner. For example, the mayor has put forth, sorry, uh, some specific guidelines on how things get put on the agenda. I think that that clears up a lot of chaos that, that used to happen a lot of, of the old meetings. At the same time, I also believe that Ms. Berry is right in some of her complaints about the processes that we follow having to do with council minutes and other procedural issues. I believe that I can help build, uh, bridge that gap that exists in some of these process failures and how the council handles them. I think it is important that you and the people of the city know how I feel about voting on some of the more recent decisions that have been made, so here are a few. The warehouse on Lowry Road, uh, I came to the zoning board meeting for the presentation and I was unimpressed. I would not have supported the rezoning of the warehouse, but I also understand that in all likelihood there will never be the type of residential development on that site that we want. So I'd be open to a facility that brings more jobs and real value to that location. Also, hopefully something that we actually know what's gonna be going in there. The approval of the special permit for the sewage plant, that's an easy one. Uh, sewage is one of the biggest drags we have on our growth. Upgrading our utilities is something we definitely need to do and have needed to do for a long time, so I would approve that. The demolition and reclamation of the mill is another big one. I'm actually very excited about this project, but also very weary. The path forward is complicated, there are a lot of ways it can go right and a lot of ways it can go wrong. That's why we need to consider every option, get creative, uh, and make sound, intelligent, informed decisions every step of the way. I don't wanna be a bystander and just vote yea or nay on this. I wanna actively be a part of the plan. And I saved the worst one for last. I said that I was gonna be open and honest, so make a true informed decision, and that's, this last one is the, uh, the military. The growing city that hasn't made upgrades in twenty years cannot properly run or catch up while running on a deficit or a near deficit. I would have very begrudgingly approved this rate, with the caveat that I will never vote to approve a rate higher than it currently is, because if we are doing our jobs correctly, the city will grow. The tax base will expand both residentially and commercially, and we will have the opportunity to potentially lower the rate in the future. If we cannot accomplish, uh, if we cannot accomplish that without raising rates, we are not fit to be in office. Oh, man. I practiced that so many times. But anyways, Joseph Brian, uh, do you guys have any questions for me?
I have one.
Yeah.
Uh, the same one that, uh, I put out there before, uh, your contributions within the community, things you've been involved with in the community.
Um, in our neighborhood, I live in Canterbury, um, so actually in our neighborhood, my family runs the haunted house that happens there every year. And then we also did, we actually just this past weekend did a, like a community, um, Christmas party where we had, we had hired a Santa to come sit on our porch and, and, uh, the, all the kids could come by and see. Uh, we've done spring fling things at our house for the neighborhood. Uh, we did a back-to-school one this year. So we try to kind of do a, pretty much everything. We actually ran the haunted house downtown a couple of years ago, uh, whenever, I can't remember what year it was, 2018. So we try to, we try to get involved as much as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Bynum. All right.
That concludes the agenda. Other than the announcement, uh, announcements, Mr. Mayor and council members, City Hall will be closed on Monday, December twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, for the Christmas holidays. Additionally, the senior center will be closed Wednesday, December twenty-seventh through Friday, December twenty-ninth. And then for New Year's, the City Hall will be closed on Monday, January the first, 2024. That's New Year's holiday.
All right, since we have no citizens' comments, the business of the evening is complete, we are adjourned.
All right. I'll drink today, I hope.